Shall we get started? Today is June 30th, 2025. This is a joint meeting of the City Council and the Flagstaff Planning and Zoning Commission. And I'm calling this to order. Notice is given that at this meeting, the Council and the P&amp;Z Commission may vote to go into executive session, which will not be open to the public for discussion and consultation with the city's attorneys on any item that is listed on the agenda. Can we have roll call?
Mayor Daggett?
Here.
Vice Mayor Sweet?
Here.
Councilmember Aslan?
Here.
Councilmember Garcia?
Present.
Councilmember House?
I'm here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Spence?
Here.
Chair Mandino? Vice Chair Norton?
Here.
Commissioner Luque? Commissioner Mayher? Mayher?
Here.
Commissioner Sharp? Commissioner Sheehy?
Present.
Commissioner Weller?
Do you want to call for her again, or we just know that she's there?
She put in the chat, so I think we're good to go. Can you hear us, Chair Mandino? Okay, so she said she can't unmute, but she is here.
Great. Councilmember Spence, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor, would you read our mission statement?
The mission of the City of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
Thank you. And Councilmember Aslan, the land acknowledgement?
The Flagstaff City Council humbly acknowledges the ancestral homelands of this area's indigenous nations and original stewards. These lands, still inhabited by native descendants, border mountains sacred to indigenous peoples. We honor them, their legacies, their traditions, and their continued contributions. We celebrate their past, present, and future generations who will forever know this place as home.
Thank you so much. All right. We are headed into the agenda, which staff is going to guide us down. If anyone has a question or a comment, since, just if you'll raise your hand, I'll call on you, since most of us don't have laptops. So take it away. Thank you, Mayor. So Mayor, Councilmembers, and Planning and Zoning Commissioners. My name's Alexandra Puccarelli. I'm the current Planning Manager at the City of Flagstaff. So I oversee the planners who bring items to both P&amp;Z and then usually to Council. Today, we're doing a joint City Council and Planning and Zoning Commission training exercise. This is based on one that we set up for P&amp;Z. So if it, it's gonna kind of start out more specific to the Planning and Zoning Commission, but I think it's great background for Council to hear, and we'll tie them all in together as we progress. So. First up, I'm going to talk about the duties of the Planning Commission. So each city establishes a Planning Commission and passes an ordinance that defines its duties and scope of work. The duties for the City of Flagstaff Planning Commission can be found in Title II of the City Code. The Planning Commission acts on behalf of City Council in deciding on and recommending land use activities and related matters. So the Planning Commission holds public hearings and meetings. They review and make recommendations on the general plan and specific plans. They review and recommend zoning code regulations. They also make recommendations on the reclassification of a property zoning, rezones, as we call them. They also, they used to make recommendations on subdivisions. We've since amended code. There are still a few applications that are under the old code that P&amp;Z will see some stragglers coming through. But in an effort to kind of streamline that process and with changes in state statute, we updated our code to allow a lot more subdivisions to follow a more administrative process. The Planning and Zoning Commission also acts on conditional use permits and other types of planning applications. Council does have the ability to appeal some of those, especially conditional use permits. Council will see, we do a notice, notification of decision, and then you can decide if you need to rehear those cases. Open meeting law. So just as a reminder, legal action must take place in a public meeting. The proposing and discussing, discussing of an action has to take place in a public meeting. And only agendized items can be discussed. And meetings have to comply with legal requirements for noticing, for posting the agenda, for providing minutes of the meeting. This is all about transparency with our community. There are also penalties. If you're found guilty of an open meeting law violation, a court could levy a fine of up to $500 against the commissioner for each violation. And the commissioner is personally on the hook for that money. The city's not going to come to your rescue with that $500. The commissioner is also subject to removal from office or that appointment, I guess. Relationship to staff. So staff works for the commission, but we're not hired or fired by the commission. The commission liaison, I'm the staff liaison to the Planning and Zoning Commission. I work for the Planning Director. And the commission may seek information from the planners. They can ask for recommendations or actions, and they can rely on the planner's expert knowledge. But it's not within the commission's authority to direct a planner to prepare a new general plan or zoning code typically. I think that's enough. Okay. Next up, we have Sarah is going to talk.
Hi, Sarah Decter, Comprehensive and Neighborhood Planning Manager. Thank you, Alex. I'm just going to have two brief slides to talk about the general plan because it ties into a lot of what you're going to hear today. We are currently under the Regional Plan 2030, which is our general plan for the city. You all know that this provides the vision for our community's future and is our framework. And that's the important word, it's the framework for legislative decisions concerning transportation and land use. We have to apply, when we're talking about the context of today, the regional plan within a broad set of existing laws, regulations, and court decisions. So determining what is permissible in land use decision-making is not as easy as reading the plan and saying, well, we're going to go do that. Because the plan can't override any federal or state laws or any constitutional limits on the authority of the jurisdiction to exercise police powers, which is really what zoning and zoning actions are on behalf of the city. And it cannot be used in a manner that's inconsistent with any common law cases in the state of Arizona. And that's why when the general plan or zoning comes up, very often you see legal here as well to be part of advising the commission and council. So the current regional plan uses the Future Growth Illustration that you see here on the screen. And we use it in two ways. We use it to determine if proposals are compatible with the plan's vision and also if a major and minor plan amendment may be required. Those kinds of plan amendments are different in that they have different analysis and notification and hearing processes. So our current plan has 90 goals and over 500 policies. These are all considered when there's a finding of regional plan conformance for the various kind of decisions you might discuss today. Next, we'll talk a little about a specific plan. So area or specific plans are either geographic in scale or topic-specific. And they further refine our general plan. They include statements of how the plan implements the larger regional plan goals and policies and how it's compatible with it. Some decisions, but not all, must conform with applicable specific plans in addition to the regional plan. So you need to look for that when you see findings, does it say, and any applicable specific plans. The city generated a few specific plans in the last decade or two. La Plaza Vieja, South Side, and the High Occupancy Housing Plan. For these plans that were adopted by resolution, if there is a conflict between the city's general plan, whether it be the current one or in the future, some updated one, and the regional plan are there, are in that regional plan and the specific plan, generally the regional plan is what you look for to supersede any conflicts. There are a few property owner-initiated specific plans that were, were and are adopted by ordinance. Those are part of specific zoning cases. The two examples you're probably the most familiar with are the McMillan Mesa Village and the NIH Health Specific Plan. These plans, because they are adopted by ordinance, cannot override competing language in the regional plan. Without, hand it to Tiffany.
All right, the zoning code. Really what we do isn't complete without the ordinance necessary to enforce adopted land use policies. Zoning and subdivision ordinances are the most recognized and widely-used means of implementation of these particular policies. But in general, the commission and council often uses many other of the city code requirements, including our engineering standards, stormwater regulations, as well as looking at our capital improvement programs. So while I think zoning is the best rah rah, there are lots of other supporting codes and requirements that we all work to rely on to review different planning cases. Zoning is itself the classification of land according to use or building form, such as a single-family residence, commercial, or industrial. Our code is also very unique. We're not as singly-minded as many zoning codes are. So our residential zones are much more broad breadth, so are our commercial and industrial. In the case of Flagstaff, we also regulate according to building form, although we're starting to move away from that in a degree, and you'll see some of those changes in the future. But we still have the form-based code. And uses or forms may be permitted outright. They may be permitted with conditions. They may be permitted as accessory use to the main use, or they can be prohibited. A city zoning code, don't ask me what we do with any use as not otherwise talked about, because I don't know, I'm just kidding. A city zoning code consists really of two parts. It's the text itself and the map. The map shows the location of the different land use classifications, while the text contains standards for each classification, such as minimum lot size, setbacks, building height, lot coverage, or floor, or floor area ratio. So I would say that state statute does provide for the adoption and administration of zoning in Arizona. So there are a lot of things that are in our zoning code that are set out specifically in state statute. You're also seeing a lot of amendments move in and around the zoning code as are required by new legislation. Subdivision ordinance, this, so I'd say the, just for your knowledge, the zoning code is Title 10 of City Code. The subdivision code falls under Title 11, which includes the provisions for subdivisions or dividing of land within the City of Flagstaff. The purpose of these standards is to facilitate orderly growth and harmonious development. Subdivision regulations reflect policies developed by the city and its general plan to help regulate the need for extended, expanded public services, including transportation, education, water, sewer, and other utilities that are influenced by the sale of subdivided land. Community standards also include the preservation of resources and to accommodate a variety of housing types, to ensure safe and efficient traffic circulation, provide developable lots, and provide adequate utility resources.
Okay. Good afternoon, Michelle McNulty, Planning Director. I'm going to talk a little bit about ethical principles in planning. So the planning process really exists to serve the public interest. Planning issues commonly involve a conflict of values, and often there are large private interests at stake. So it must be continuously to pursue and faithfully serve the public interest. And planning process participants continually strive to achieve high standards of integrity and proficiency so that the public respect for the planning process will be maintained. And so those who participate in planning, and that's all of us in the room, whether you're an actual planner or a decision-maker in a planning application, need to adhere to ethical standards to ensure the highest standards of fairness and honesty among all applicants, all participants. So the American Planning Association actually has a set of ethical planning principles, and they include, but they're not limited to, an ethical judgment often requires a conscientious balancing based on the facts and context of a particular situation, give people the opportunity, opportunity to have a meaningful impact on the development of plans that may affect them, seek social justice, promote excellence of design and endeavor to conserve and preserve the natural and built environment, deal fairly and even-handedly with all planning process participants, avoid a conflict of entrance or even an appearance of conflict of interest throughout the planning process, and exercise fair, honest, and independent judgment as a decision-maker and advisor. So what is the public interest? First, we have to remember who the client is. That's everybody. It's not just the applicant in the room. For the decision-makers, it's actually the public as a whole, even those, even those that aren't here in the room providing public testimony, but that are at home. So who benefits from the decision? That's kind of, again, the public as a whole. You have to also determine what constitute that public interest as a whole. So that's up to you to decide, but it's usually going to be the public, not just certain individuals or groups. And decisions made in the public interest should always consider not just the now, but the future, and how is it going to affect the future generations? Thanks. And I think this is Tag Team to Sterling.
I'm going to go back to the previous slide. First of all, Mayor, Council, and Chair, Commissioners, Sterling Solomon, City Attorney, commonly referred to, as Sarah mentioned earlier, I think, Legal. That's my nickname, Legal over here. Stu, Stella, I've got a lot of other nicknames. We won't go into all those. I want to go back to something Michelle mentioned before I talk about ex parte communications and a couple of other things related to that. Zoning obviously is, is of high public concern, zoning and planning. And that public interest that, that, you know, Michelle went over here with you, is multifaceted. There are many groups, many individuals, many interested parties. Ex parte contacts, the word ex parte actually comes from Latin, and it means one-sided, or from one or one side only. Multifaceted is just the opposite. You have a duty, when you're considering anything planning and zoning-related, to consider all sides and to weigh all of those. I'm famous, especially with Councilmember Aslan, for making the statement that I wouldn't wish a council member's seat on my worst enemy. But that said, Commissioners are in a difficult seat there, too. You're in a very difficult place where you make very difficult decisions, but it's much appreciated. That's all I mean to say by that. We really appreciate what you do in considering all of those different angles. But you have to be careful about being influenced outside the public forum.
Sterling, do you remember what I said to you in response?
I actually do, but I'll let you say it. Now you put me on the spot. You said, I loved, I love being the worst, or something.
No, I said, I wouldn't want my worst enemy up here either.
Oh, I wouldn't want my worst enemy, yes. I love being here because I wouldn't want my worst enemy here. That said, you have to avoid being influenced by outside members of the public or groups or individuals or interested parties outside the public forum. Everything here is about transparency. That's the whole goal. So please keep that in mind. And the other thing I will say, Councilmembers, I'll have my, my mobile number. I'll give that to you Commissioners as well. Just reach out if you have a question about whether or not a communication is appropriate or not. Contacts which occur away from the hearing are known as ex parte, and then could include anything from a, you know, run-in on the street corner to a phone call to coffee at the, you know, corner coffee shop, informal meetings, whatever it might be. They can all include ex parte communications. And it's, it's very common for you because you're the public face of either the council or the commission in the community. So a couple of tips when it comes to dealing with ex parte communication or communications. If somebody does reach out to you to discuss a case, tell them you're very interested in hearing that, and so is the rest of the public. They're all very interested, and they have the right to hear about it at the same time that you do. If they have, you know, things that they want to submit in writing, just tell them, hey, don't submit those to me, go ahead and submit them to staff. And they'll be included in the commission's packet. Just refrain generally from speaking about your, your position specifically on a, on a certain matter. And if you do make a site visit to where the, the property being considered is, is located, disclose that on the record. If you have an ex parte contact with a member of the public, the applicant, another interested party, anybody, it's always best just to take the high road and put it on the public record. And that way, you'll avoid any kind of issues with ex parte communications. The whole goal here again, another word for transparency, is due process. Everybody deserves notice of the meetings. Everybody deserves adequate, an adequate opportunity to participate, whether that's submitting something in writing if they can't be here in person or coming here in person to comment to you during the hearing. Availability of all the staff reports and all the other ancillary information to the public, that's necessary for them to be able to understand all the issues. Again, it's multifaceted, not one-sided. And obviously, you know, full disclosure or the chance to hear or see or review all the information. The word in state statute, when it comes to meetings and open meeting law and avoiding ex parte communications, the word is attend. And the definition of that is they're able to be here and participate, listen, comment, and provide their, their input before council or the commission makes its deliberations. Everybody deserves that opportunity. One final note, you as commission members may have a position that you take as a citizen of Flagstaff, and you don't give up that right to have a position yourself to come speak to the council about that position. My advice, as your attorney, is simply to state that you're up here not as a commission member, but as, and state your name, and that your views and opinions are your own and don't reflect those of the entire commission. That's the safest way to go ahead and provide your input before the council. You can't use your commission title to make a statement. And you have to disclose that you are a member of the commission and you're speaking only on behalf of yourself. And that's my two cents. Thank you.
I'm back. Okay. So for most of the planning applications that, that come through staff, when it goes to the Planning and Zoning Commission, staff makes recommendations. We include that in our report that's prepared by staff. It's attached to the agenda. The public has access to it, council has access to it, and the commission has access. Most of the time, fingers crossed, knock on wood, all that, we're recommending approval. We've worked with the applicant to get the application to a point where it meets code. We meet the findings, and we can recommend approval. Sometimes, hopefully, it continues to be infrequently, we do have to recommend denial. And that's from staff. Conditions of approval. Staff will often include in our staff report suggested conditions of approval. The timing of those conditions can vary. Sometimes it's just you need to add this on your construction documents when you come in for permits. Other times, it's, you know, when you build the 50th house, then you need to install this right-hand turn lane or something like that. Staff is responsible for enforcing those conditions. And, but conditions can't just be like a magic wand to fix existing problems in the community or not have a tie to that development. It has to be, that condition is necessary to ensure the intent and purpose of the code, and it has to be allowable by law. So those conditions are, we try and, and tie those conditions, for example, to the impact analyses that happen or ensuring that we're meeting findings, that you're providing public good. And they're usually also included oftentimes in development agreements. Okay. Making a decision slash findings. So. What are findings? This slide's going to take a little while, but I think it's, it has some really good juicy stuff in it. So. Oh, sorry. Juicy, juicy slide. So what are findings? You'll often hear staff, especially when, when you're making a motion, staff will often pop up and say, in accordance with the findings. So we tie all of our decisions. So we tie all of our decisions to whether or not you're meeting the findings. The findings for different decisions are outlined in the zoning code. So findings might be different for, they are, not might, but they are different, for example, for a conditional use permit versus rezoning or a subdivision or whatnot. So how to make findings? We apply facts to law. So a finding of fact should explain how and why the city reached its decision. Using the code provisions for findings, we explain the relevant facts relation to the particular application and apply those facts to the legal criteria. Show your work. We explain the method of reasoning followed by the city in judging an application, and this helps ensure the city is on the right track. This way, the public can tell how we reached this result and they don't have to guess. They can tell this is why it was approved, this is why it wasn't. Look up the law. A critical early step is to identify the relevant legal standards. So you can always go back to the zoning code or ask staff to help you to find out where those findings are, what they actually state. Provide relevant facts. The finding of fact should state all of the relevant facts the city considered in making its decision. A fact is relevant if it proves or disproves that the application meets the legal standards. Stay on track. Sometimes issues arise that don't relate to the legal standards. A lot of time and energy can be wasted on issues that don't actually lead to a solution. So we don't want to include those irrelevant facts when we're stating our findings. Beware of opposition. So we have a lot of cases where the public comes out and there's a lot of comment against a certain case, but the opinions of neighbors should not be the sole basis for a particular city action. Don't parrot. Findings should adequately describe the reasoning for a decision. Merely restating the legal standard is not enough. So you can't just say, "I think it meets the findings because it meets the findings," right? Like circular logic. Just because. One of the simplest techniques to ensure findings connect the decision to legal standards is to use the word "because." Similar approaches to phrase the standard as a question and then provide a detailed answer. Don't assume. Written findings should be clear to someone unfamiliar with the matter. A person who knows nothing about the city or the subject property or case should be able to read the findings and know what decision was made and why. So those findings of fact, they provide this framework for making decisions so that the last thing we want to be is arbitrary or capricious, right? They also, they facilitate an orderly analysis and they ensure that decision-making is careful, reasoned, and equitable. It also enables parties to determine a basis for an appeal. So if, whether you're denying something or another group decides to appeal an approval, they have a clear outline of why this decision was made and what it was based on. It gives the appeal body the basis of the commission's decision.
Good afternoon. My name is Stacy Salzberg. I'm the Communication and Civic Engagement Director and I also serve as your city clerk. So we've talked a lot about kind of rules and process. So I wanted to take a little bit to talk about the relationship between the Planning and Zoning Commission and the City Council because there is a really good relationship there. It should be strong and it should be a place of working together to advance the city's goals and objectives as these different things come before you. So for the most part, the commission is in an advisory role. They provide recommendations. They provide their advice and their position on certain matters that come to them. So as was mentioned, things like a zoning map amendment, perhaps a general plan amendment, and of course, any zoning code amendments. Those are types of things that you're going to hear, you're going to consider, and you're going to make a base, you're going to make a decision for a recommendation based on those findings that Alex just explained. But advisory really means that you're making a recommendation to the city council and the city council ultimately makes the final decision based on your recommendations and the information that you provide to them. As a part of that, we often get questions why the Planning and Zoning Commission does not have a city council representative, a liaison from the city council that sits on the board and kind of interacts with you in those relations. Part of the reason why is because so much of what you do is in that kind of semi or quasi judicial, you know, capacity. And many of the things, in fact, a good number of the things that you do ultimately go to the city council. And the city council has to consider all of the pieces. They have to consider all of your recommendations and all the information that went into how you formulated that recommendation. And again, they make that ultimate decision. So if you were to have a city council member sitting on your commission as a liaison, they're already kind of getting into that space of decision-making well before their colleagues on the city council have that same opportunity. I'm going to explain here in just a minute, there may be some differences that happen between what is presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission and what is presented to the city council. And again, that can put folks in an uncomfortable position if they're not receiving the same information that their peers are. So going back to the recommendations that you formulate, the recommendation may influence the applicant to make some modifications. So let's just say for a moment, a project comes before you, the commission ultimately is going to recommend denial based on, you know, these findings and these things that they feel are problematic. In between the time that that recommendation is made and the time that that comes to council for consideration and approval, there may be some changes. So they may have taken the feedback that was received from the Planning and Zoning Commission and come back to their application and make those adjustments based, again, on that feedback. So then, when they come to council and they're able to present those modifications, those changes, you know, based on what we heard from the Planning and Zoning Commission, you know, we recognize that maybe this adjustment needed to be made and therefore, that's what we're proposing. And so that, when that happens, there is a good possibility that you may have a recommendation for denial. And then ultimately, council will approve whatever is coming before them. And that's not for any reason other than they're considering all of that information, not only that came from the commission and their recommendations, but if there had been any adjustments from the development side that perhaps need to be taken into consideration as well. We had a recent example of this. The Lake Mary Housing Project came forward fairly recently. I'm sure you all remember that. The Planning and Zoning Commission had heard the application. They gathered the information. They made a recommendation based on what they had heard, and that recommendation was for denial. Then that project came before the city council to, again, have those conversations, present the information, and let the council make that decision. But what happened in between was some changes that the developer made, again, based on that feedback that they heard from you as the Planning and Zoning Commission. And that probably, didn't probably, but that goes into the consideration that council takes when they're hearing these and they're considering what position that they're going to take on approval or denial. So those things happen. A lot of times, there may be, you know, there's a concert decision that you are both right in line, but I think it's just important to know that things can change in between point A and point B. If a proposal has changed significantly, the council may say, you know, "There's a lot here that wasn't necessarily presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission. A lot has changed between the two. We'd like the Planning and Zoning Commission to go back and consider this and formulate a recommendation based on these changes." That is within their purview to do. And it allows them to, again, go back to this commission as an advisory body to say, "We really want to know what you think about these changes. We want to know what you think about this in the collective," and come back to us with So again, I think I want to just really reiterate that the relationship between these two bodies can be very strong. It can be very, what's the word? Sorry. I apologize. I had my thoughts going. But it really allows for a good sharing of information and a good sharing of perspectives between essentially the 14 of you that really weigh these decisions. I think having a positive relationship also helps with really ensuring that you each have that trust in each other, that you are, you know, you're comfortable as a commission knowing that council's going to be taking into consideration your recommendations. They'll look at those findings. They'll look at your comments and process, and that goes into their decision-making and vice versa. You know, understanding that the council takes everything that's presented to them and perhaps some additional information that may have come through. And also really knowing that they do take that information and they do formulate a good decision.
Stacy, I have a question for you, two of them. Just for clarification, you know, when we have a decision like the Lake Mary Housing Project coming through, Sterling is right there reminding us of our scope of decision. What our findings have to be, none of our other opinions, right? Is that, does the commission also get that luxury of having the watchdog over here with his facial expressions? You know, because we all have, you know, opinions on projects, whether we maybe like them or not. NIMBYism can be an influence, but is that, I know Sterling's just really very clear, you know, and if we start even having a discussion when we're talking about our legal restraints of a decision, he brings us back on track. Is that, does that go transcend to the commission as well for their benefit?
I'm going to let, I'm actually going to let Sterling speak to that.
Yes, we have a staff attorney that devises the commission as well, commission meetings.
Thank you.
I'll just say, too, I think staff does a really good job in our reports of sticking with the findings and then trying to, trying to structure the conversation around those findings, so.
And full disclosure, Christina Rubalcava, who does great work, is the attorney that's working most closely with planning and zoning and staff at all times, so thank you.
So thank you for your time. And if I can just take a moment to say thank you for your service. I appreciate that this is a great and diverse group, both between the commission and our council. And I think you all bring perspectives that are very valuable and very important to our community, so thank you for that.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. Mayor has stepped out for a minute, so I'm here to help facilitate questions, comments from those of us up here on the dais. Go ahead.
I just wanted to, you know, kind of comment on the communication, you know, from when it goes from planning and zoning to council, you know, understanding, I'm one that tends to follow our cases as it moves on to city council and see what comes of it. And I don't always feel that, even as a commissioner, and certainly maybe not for the public's sake, you know, in the effort of transparency, if some of those changes could be, if there are changes that resulted in a denial, recommendation to denial, and it gets to you and it's been improved, like Lake Mary, obviously, there were a lot of changes made in the hospital cases, that those might be expressed. Like these specific changes came forward recently in between the two meetings. I think that would help. I know I get questions, the public, you see, you know, letters to the editor in the paper. I'm sure all of you, you know, "Well, why did planning and zoning not agree and council overrode their decision?" Which is a bit of a misunderstanding in and of itself. But I would just say that for transparency's sake. I also, secondly, wanted to say, like, when we listen to the findings, you know, especially when, you know, we have a general plan that has so many goals and policies and they may have come through and met certain things, and we may find things that we're not in agreement with, so that might be the source of some of our reasons for not meeting the findings or the second finding of the, you know, public interest, safety, health, and welfare, et cetera. How hard it is to be the first branch that breaks from staff recommendations and, you know, hoping that at least those discussions are worthwhile to the process, you know, with the applicant and staff and for council. And that, sometimes, thirdly, my other comment was, I don't always see in the meetings or in what's available to the public, and it might be in your private packages or your full packages, I should say, that what our decision was and why. You know, often I'll hear, "Well, planning and zoning recommended unanimously," but I don't always hear a discussion or a mention of if we were split and with a hearty discussion of why we might have been split. So I think that would be helpful to this communication. I was one that was advocating to have a liaison from council on planning and zoning, not as a person to sit and discuss and be a voting member on planning and zoning, but somebody that was just there to listen and hear whether they're present or whether they're responsible for listening to the recording because we meet twice a month. It's hours each time. As councilmembers, you have a lot of responsibilities on a lot of different committees and commissions and other things that you do. It's a lot to say. You gotta, you all need to listen to planning and zoning every other week for several hours more. So that was my purpose in having a councilmember that was just there to hear the context of our discussions and maybe they could also contribute that to cases when they come forward to you. Thanks.
I'm going to respond. Thank you for bringing up so many good valid points. And I originally brought this meeting up months ago because I was asking about the liaison. Is it a good idea? Is it not a good idea? And kind of going back and forth on that. So I appreciate that you brought it up and I understand from staff's viewpoint why perhaps that isn't the way to go. I will say for me, I don't attend the P&amp;Z meetings in person, but, you know, I try and either watch all of them or watch the portion that, you know, is coming to council that is contentious, that, you know, I see is going to have a lot of banter back and forth. And I can't remember who I talked to on P&amp;Z stating that, that, you know, I'm not there physically because quite honestly, it is impossible to try and do it all. But, you know, I hope that, and I would guess that council is watching them offline. So I appreciate you bringing that up. And I guess I have two things for Sterling. One is, you had mentioned recently, and I really have been reminded that when we meet with developers or certain entities, that it's a very good idea to have legal counsel present. Can you speak to that?
Absolutely. If you haven't seen the email, I can send it again. It's one that I send regularly, but if you're meeting with developers, we recommend you have a member of, you know, planning and zoning staff there with you, CD staff, as well as an attorney, if they've brought an attorney, if the developer has brought an attorney. Quite often, they do, and that's why I send that email on a regular basis.
Thank you. I just wanted that to be publicly heard. Councilmember Matthews?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And to Mary's point, we do, and to Vice Mayor's, we can get very bogged down in stuff that's going on. And I have tried to go back and watch some of the meetings. As Mary pointed out, they're very lengthy, a lot of them. There's a lot to discuss. Is it within reason and maybe there's a time constraint from the commissioners, but on situations when there's a recommendation for denial, if someone from the commission or staff could email the council with a summary of kind of what was the, you know, the major points and why the recommendation was of denial was provided and just in case we did miss it and not get to watch the back and forth, you know, conversation, it might add some additional clarity and understanding on something maybe we overlooked.
it might add some additional clarity and understanding on something maybe we overlooked, or just a different perspective of where we thought in those findings, especially, you know, there's one or two more vague, you know, does, how does it impact the health and, you know, well-being and stuff of our community? Well, that's really subjective to, you know, how you view that, right? So could we, or even maybe on a volunteer, something that, you know, if Mary's passionate about it, or Josh about, you know, I really want to make sure the, the council understands, this is why we recommended denial, it might add some, a layer of understanding for us to understand what, because you're, you're talking about focusing on just that request, and we have 20 different agenda items that sometimes, you know, clog and muddy the waters of understanding, and you guys are more laser focused on, you know, those discussions, and that's your, your meeting, or just focused in on those discussions, so it might be helpful, I know for me, if I got a snippet, if I didn't have time to watch the meeting.
I think I'll comment on that too. I, I've witnessed a, a city council meeting, I think it might have even have been you that asked staff, why did planning and zoning disagree with this? And, and I felt, it really puts you all on the spot, because you're standing in front of your applicant, who you have produced a report that supported their project, and now you're being asked to now say, explain why the other body disagreed with, with you. And maybe, you know, a separate reporter, a separate summary would take that awkwardness out of the process.
Michelle?
Thank you, thank you for this conversation. So we were just talking amongst ourselves, and yeah, that's definitely something we can add to the staff reports. And then Alex was even saying, I mean, we can even do a little write-up of, here were the dissenting votes, kind of give that summary, here are the findings, and then if there's anything that's changed, because in some ways, what we're talking about is the process working. We get information to planning and zoning, and maybe it's deficient in some way, and so then the applicant provides that, you know, information to resolve that deficiency, and then it gets to council, and you're able to make an approval because you have that information that maybe they didn't, or it's been corrected. So we can also speak to that in the staff summary as well, saying, hey, this is what's changed, so that everyone's aware that there's, there has been additional information or something has changed that has addressed some concerns. Thanks.
That would be really helpful, thank you. And, and we don't get a special package. We get what everybody else gets on Thursday night that's emailed. We don't get any insight that you don't get to see, so I wish sometimes, but yeah, that, so that would be helpful, thank you.
Thank you, and I have Councilmember House on line with a comment.
Thank you. Yeah, a, a lot of what I was going to say has, has already been covered, but just wanted to acknowledge the comment about how useful it is to hear when there is a decision that comes before council, and perhaps there is a dissenting vote, or a, a split, or any of the other things that were mentioned. I do find it useful to hear and, and ask that question of what the conversation was. I also make attempts to watch those meetings, especially when I know something is coming before council in the, the coming days or weeks, to be able to hear firsthand what that conversation was. But I think it's also helpful, and I, I believe some members of Planning and Zoning and, and other commissions have done this in the past, excuse me, have done this in the past, where they will state that they are coming to speak to council on their own behalf while they are a commissioner. And we'll go into some of those rationales or reasoning for a public comment, and I find that very helpful as well, just to be able to hear at the dais and, and in the full presence of both the council and the community, what that conversation was and how it led to the, the overall decision. I know that in the past, there have been those instances where things do change between the time that Planning and Zoning is hearing something, and then it's, it's coming before council, and maybe a developer has made adjustments, or we, we have more information or answers even sometimes to a question that might have come up during the Planning and Zoning Commission consideration of something. And it's just helpful to be able to put that full picture together. And I would also encourage the Planning and Zoning Commission to feel free to be part of that conversation as well. You know, if we're, if we're coming before council with something and hearing those changes, I value it when we hear from you whether or not that changes your opinion, whether or not it would have been helpful to hear sooner, or, or however it, it impacts the work that you're doing, because we know that this is a, a very important, all of our commissions are important. This one just has that added layer of having those direct inputs and, and things to say on the important decisions that we're making regarding the growth of our community. So any opportunity that we have to hear from you on the decisions that are being made at that level, I think are very helpful, and being able to coordinate hearing that information between what you might send to council and having your, your staff liaison as part of those, or coming to council itself and being able to share that is all just very, very helpful. So thank you, Commissioner, for bringing that up, and just for keeping that at the, the front of our conversation. Thank you.
Councilmember Matthews?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Sterling, that brought up a question I had in my mind that you had covered, I think it was you that covered it earlier, of when some of the commissioners come to speak, it's very important to, they can't come to speak on behalf of their role as a commissioner, correct, to give public comment on that?
That's correct. They can come to speak as a citizen, simply for themselves, it, it's best to state upfront, I'm not here as a commission member, although I am on the commission, I'm speaking for myself, and my views and opinions are not those of the entire commission.
Can, could the commissioner, though, send an email to mayor and council with an extended explanation of why they concluded that? Or does that need to just be come from staff summary?
That, that needs to be either part of the staff summary, or the commissioner can come to the meeting or submit written comments to staff to include in the summary.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear, because I started going down a different path with that, and, and I thought, oh, that's a great idea, if they could come and talk at public comments and, and share their thoughts, but I thought that it was probably not allowed.
Yeah, and even with those written comments, it's best to state that these are my views and opinions and why I, you know, recommended this or didn't recommend this.
So, yeah, so they couldn't do that, right?
Could speak on behalf of the entire commission as one commission member, just like you as council members can't speak for the entire council, one of seven.
Councilmember Spence?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I have a question. As an applicant or a developer comes before the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they, after presenting their plans, P and Z votes, and if the decision is to deny the applicant, does that applicant or developer have the option of coming back to P and Z with an amended plan? In other words, can, can the developer say, I'm not ready to go to the city council for the final decision, I want to come back to P and Z? Do they have that option?
I'm happy to answer that. They would need to go through the process with an amended plan, correct, and then back through P and Z to council. If either of you wanted to jump in on that, you're welcome to.
It's my understanding they could withdraw the application at that point, if they received, for example, a recommendation of denial, then they could amend the plan and go back through the staff review and back to P and Z with a, with a different plan.
And, and in that scenario, do they go, does the developer go to the back of the queue and wait weeks or months, or do, are they given expedited second chance?
I think they would get in line behind everyone else and, and go through the process again.
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So on the discussion about going to the back of the queue, should the, if the council decides, because I understand that the council does have the option to also remand the, the application back to the Planning and Zoning Commission, would they also end up going back through the queue, or how would that work?
In a way, they would not have to, I don't think they would necessarily have to go back through the administrative, the staff review process, but we would have to reschedule them for a public hearing and follow all the noticing, and, and so they'd at least need to, to follow those requirements.
And if I could, I think the key on that is the council sending it back to P and Z rather than the applicant voluntarily withdrawing and getting back to the very beginning of the line that withdraws the process back.
Go ahead.
I have a question for Solomon. I'm, having been a hearing officer, I'm very familiar with the ex parte, as well as having been on a planning commission and disclosing things. I've had a situation where I was a private sector planner, and I was working with a public sector planner on a very controversial project, and we didn't disclose that we knew each other, because we've both been around 20 something years doing planning. And it turned into a rather nefarious newspaper investigation. So I'm wondering, do we also need to disclose, gee, I used to work with that person, or, you know, I've had cases with this attorney, I've hired him in the past, or...
Yeah, best, best practice is yes, by all means. If, if there's anything that you think, just it appears normal to you, but to anybody from the outside looking in, that it would be new to them and kind of a surprise, absolutely, err on the side of caution and disclose.
Any other questions or comments? I just want to give a big thanks to staff for holding this. I, I know it, we're all very busy. We work hard for this community, and I think it's good to ask these questions and to get them out on the table, so that we can continue to work alongside one another in a good, healthy way for Flagstaff. So thank you, everyone, for being here. Not seeing any other questions, comments? Staff, anything?
I would just like to thank Alex and Georgiana, they're the ones that did all the heavy lifting for this, so thank you both for, for this training.
Thank you. Looks like we're down to item five, informational items to from mayor, council, and commissioners. And Councilmember Matthews, I'm going to start with you.
Nothing, thank you.
We can just go down the row. Nothing for me? Anyone online have something to add?
Nothing from me, Madam Vice Mayor.
Okay, thank you, and with that, this meeting is adjourned.